No. Planning Commission members, you are live in three, two, one.
Welcome, everybody, to the September fourteenth, twenty twenty, public hearing of the Planning Commission on Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments, participa- participa- participation are encouraged. To minimize feedback in the audio, all participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves or turn on their camera to indicate they would like to speak. You can also send the chat to Melissa if you would prefer to be recognized that way. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. Please click the raise hand button illustrated on the screen. You will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. Members of the public may also ask questions to staff at any time during the meeting by typing them into the questions chat box illustrated on the lower right of the screen. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HG- HTV and would like to speak during the public comments portion of the meeting, please call telephone number eight one three, two seven three, three seven, seven four, extension three five nine. Again, that telephone number is eight one three, two seven three, three seven, seven four, extension three five nine. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will be given, staff will give their presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. Following the presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute rebuttal period. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. And then upon a motion, a second and discussion of what will be taken. I would ask the cloak, the clerk to please call a roll now.
Good evening. Joseph?
Here.
Bernstein?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Dix? Commissioner Dix? Doughty?
Here.
Green?
Present.
Press?
Here.
Marina? Commissioner Marina? Powell?
Here.
Dickerson?
This is Matthew Pleasant, standing in for Amber Dickerson tonight.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Thank you. All right. The first item on the agenda for tonight is TT CPA twenty dash zero three Future Land Use Amendment, Future Land Use Map Amendment, presented by Mr. Mark Hudson. You are muted.
Good evening, commissioners. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Good.
Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. I'm here tonight to present to you the one plan amendment that we are processing for the city of Temple Terrace this cycle. As already noted by the chairman, it's TT CPA twenty dash oh three. This shows you the location of the plant amendment site within the boundaries of Temple Terrace. It is just north of Temple Terrace Highway, just west of North Seventy-Eight Street, south of the Hillsborough River, indicated by the star on the map in front of you on the screen. This is a little bit closer in aerial of the affected area. If you recall, when I gave you the briefing a month ago, this was somewhat of a larger area. The applicant has since contacted staff and reduced the area impacted by this plan amendment. The remaining of the site is circled by the lavender line. And the ultimate goal of the applicant is to combine this land with those lands to the north, which is the Terrace Hill Golf Course, and redevelop this area as a single-family detached neighborhood. Little bit of background, this is privately initiated. It is a small-scale plan amendment, now only affecting three point four one acres. The current land use for these two parcels are commercial and public semi-public. And the applicant wishes to have them re-designated to residential four to match the other lands that are part of the Terrace Hill Golf Course. This shows you the adopted land use map as it is today. You see the blue of the public semi-public, which is associated with Florida College. And you see the commercial, red of the commercial, which is closer and further to the south of the Terrace Hill Golf Course, just north of Temple, Temple Terrace Highway. And if this was ultimately approved by Temple Terrace City Council, you would see the land use change to the R four, the light yellow that is on the remainder of the property that is envisioned for this future semi-detached neighborhood in Temple Terrace. I did take some photos of the site to give you a general idea of the character today. As you can see, it is an active golf course. And this shows you the golf course looking back at Temple Terrace Highway and some of the multifamily development on the south side of that roadway. On the left is the, some buildings associated with Florida College, which is very near the, the westernmost parcel that's being affected. And the photo on the right shows you Temple Terrace Highway looking west, seeing some of the commercial development to the south, along the southern border of that roadway facility. There is a nice park to the north of this area called Riverfront Preserve. It is a natural park that is abutting the Hillsborough River and is open to the public. And then, of course, you can see also south of Temple Terrace Highway, some of the, another view of some of the commercial uses. There are some existing neighborhoods on the east side of North Seventy-Eight Street. And this shows you North Seventy-Eight Street looking both north and south to give you an idea of the, the buffer between those two, not only the roadway width, but some of the vegetation that would act as a natural buffer between those existing neighborhoods and this proposed new neighborhood. And these just show you some examples of how those existing neighborhoods developed and look today. So what is the potential impacts? Currently, the public semi-public and commercial uses could be developed with about seventy-five thousand square feet of non-residential uses. If this was approved by Temple Terrace City Council and later this, in the month of October, this would change these entitlements to an additional thirteen dwelling units. Our staff did review this application per the, and buy for consistency with the imagined twenty forty Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. The full goals, objectives, and policies are in your packet. But just to generally let you know that we felt it was consistent with policies related to, among others, neighborhood conservation, multimodal corridors and activity centers, growth management, the provision of public facilities and housing and the like. I did pull out three policies in particular to bring to your attention in relation to this plan amendment. Land use policy one point one point six. This basically identifies the area that's within this, this map amendment affects as a suburban neighborhood. And the requested land use residential four is a suburban land use category. Land use policy three point five point seven is to accommodate levels of population employment growth along multimodal corridors. And Temple Terrace Highway is a multimodal corridor and so designated in their plan. And finally, housing policy one point two point six is an encourage a variety of housing types to encourage additional residential growth within the municipality. And noted that policy in particular from their housing element. We did, of course, have conversations with their staff, Temple Terrace's staff on this plan amendment, in particular with their public works department, and they did indicate that there was water and wastewater capacity to serve a multi-fa- excuse me, a single-family detached neighborhood at this location. The applicant will probably able to weigh in a little bit more on this, but I believe they're looking at a little bit over a hundred and forty units in its entirety. Of course, this plan amendment is only infecting lands that would accommodate thirteen of those hundred and forty-plus units. They are going through a plan development with Temple Terrace. And, of course, they will be going through the analysis of what the transportation impacts will be and what improvements may, may be needed. And finally, we did talk to the school district and they did indicate to us that there is capacity to serve the potential student, the number of students generated by this potential neighborhood. Based on your recommendation today, we will be bringing that forward and we project that this will be heard at, at city council hearing on October twentieth. And it would be for their adoption hearing as this is, does not require transmission to DEO in advance of that proceeding. And with that, the planning commission staff recommends that you find Temple Terrace Conference of Plan Amendment TT CPA twenty dash oh three from commercial and public semi-public to residential four on three point four one acres, consistent with the imagined twenty forty Temple Terrace Conference of Plan, and afford this recommendation to Temple Terrace City Council. Chairman, that concludes my presentation and I stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
The applicant also has a presentation they would like to give.
Okay. Go ahead and have the applicant do their presentation. Is that?
Which applicant?
Sheila Tyree.
Can you share your screen now?
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. That was a great explanation of the project. As you said, this is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. This is the team that's, we're working with, Dr. Horton, Height Design. My name is Sheila Tyree. I'm with Height Design. And I also have Kristi Burrow here with me. We also have Tampa Civil online, Alex, and Lynx is associate as the transportation engineer, Robert. He's on the line if anybody has any questions. There's going to be no change to approximately thirty-two acres that's already designated residential four. And the proposed ta- change, as Mark described, is just a little over three acres, changing it from commercial and, and public to residential four. And this is going to result in approximately thirteen residential units for a total of a hundred and forty-one, which is planned in the project. As Mark showed you, the slivers of the amended areas are shown on the map. And the orange is changing from commercial to res four, and the pink is changing from public semi-public to res four. And the existing that's showing no change is already res four. Right now, this is our proposed site plan. Obviously, that can change as we go through the process, but this is what you're looking at, is a hundred and forty-one single-family homes. And does anybody have any questions?
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Tyree. I will open it up at this point in time to the public and see if there is any public comment or hands raised. I don't see any on my side. See any, Melissa?
John Hess has raised his hand.
Yeah.
John Hess, you need to unmute yourself so you can speak.
Yes, good evening. This is John Hess. I'm a resident just, I don't know, what is that, east of this project? Just had a curiosity question. I know it was brought up before and I don't resolve, I don't recall hearing anything. And I, looking at the diagram, I'm guessing it's, it's not a high concern, but my question is that going off of Temple Terrace Highway into the community, we're not creating a turn lane to go into that community?
Would you like to respond to that?
Hi, we have done a traffic analysis and at this time a turn law- turning lane is not warranted.
The analysis, it was a, how, how up to date was that analysis then?
I will have to refer to Rob from the traffic consultant for that. I am not a traffic engineer.
Yeah, because, because it's, it's right after, like, the light at seventy-eight. And we're talking about a hundred and something homes, what, two cars probably possibly per home.
A hundred and forty-one homes. And, Rob?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay, there's Rob.
Yes. Now, this is Rob Falp. I'm a professional engineer, traffic engineer with Lynx and Associates. I was instrumental in preparing the traffic study for the project. We based the study on a hundred and fifty single-family homes and you heard they're only planning for a hundred and forty-one. So our numbers in our study are going to be a little higher than what would actually be generated. We have two access points to the project and the main access is going to be coming off of Temple Terrace Highway, which is the, the full median open, opening that exists today. We do have a little bit of traffic that we plan to utilize Seventy-Eighth. And, and our study, we did analyze the signalized intersection at Temple Terrace and Seventy-Eighth. Based on the numbers, we have excellent levels of service for all approaches. During the, and that, the analysis was based on the AM and the PM peak hour. So basically, there was not a, a warrant or a need for a separate southbound right turn lane, south on Seventy-Eighth, turning to head west on Temple Terrace.
Nor- nor a turn lane to go into the community either?
Going into the community, you have a turn lane that would be an eastbound left turn lane, turning off of Temple Terrace into the main driveway. And then there is a left turn lane at the traffic signal to where you could, you're heading east and turning left to head north on Seventy-Eighth Street.
Correct. No, I was, I was specifically, I guess, I'm sorry. I was talking about like on Temple Terrace, going westbound, a, a turn lane entrance into the community.
A right turn lane, yes. We did look at that in our analysis. And again, based on the, the traffic numbers, a, an exclusive right turn lane, westbound to northbound movement at the main entrance was not warranted. Just to give you an idea of the project traffic for that movement, during the AM peak hour, the westbound right turn at the main driveway was ten vehicles. During the afternoon, the PM peak hour, we estimated thirty-five vehicles turning right at that location. That's just not enough cars to warrant the exclusive right turn lane. There's certain things that have to be done to warrant an exclusive turn lane. The volumes are very light.
Oh, yeah, but, okay, you're, okay, it's current, it's light due to current occupancy of that area. So I'm sure that the numbers for have been, you know, calculated for what the, what the, that area is supposed to be built up to. How, how is those numbers reflect on to get a turn lane? I mean, is it far from being, being met or? I'm not sure what the criteria is.
Yes, Hillsborough County, which, you know, Temple Terrace Highway is, is maintained by Hillsborough County. We have to abide by their rules and requirements. And there has to be a certain number of vehicles per hour that are turning right on a multi-lane highway such as Temple Terrace Highway. And we are shy of that. I don't have the actual number in front of me, but it's a policy that's written by the county. I'd have to look that up and tell you. But again, the highest number we had was thirty-five vehicles turning right, and that was during the PM peak hour.
All right. Did that answer your questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hess. Are there any more statements, any more input from the public? I don't see any hands raised. Did you have anybody who signed up, Melissa? I didn't hear you when you had spoken earlier. I think you had tried to say something.
No, I was just kidding. I was trying to call him Mr. Hess. So, no, I don't see any.
All right. No more hands on my side. Nobody signed up. I will open it up to commissioners then. Do you have any questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Oh, hang on, actually, I guess I should offer the applicant an opportunity to rebut, although I guess that kind of happened, but I should still do so to the public comment. Ms. Tyree, or anyone out there, if you wanted to.
Thank you, Rob, for explaining the traffic study, and I don't have any further rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Again, one more pass for the commissioners. I see no one popping up, so I will open it up for a motion on this item, TT CPA twenty oh three. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move for final consistency of Temple Terrace Complan Amendment twenty dash oh three, consistent with the imagined twenty forty comprehensive plan.
And Mr. Chairman, so you can know that I am here, I would second that motion.
All right. I have a motion for consistency from Commissioner Green and a second to that motion by Commissioner Dix. I will ask that the clerk, go ahead and make the roll call on this. Roll call vote, please.
Joseph?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Press?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. All right. That being the only item on that agenda, I will adjourn this meeting and we will go right into the next one. Welcome, everybody, to the September fourteenth, twenty twenty, public hearing of the Planning Commission on the Plant City Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged to minimize feedback in the audio. All participants in the meeting will be, will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves and turn on their camera to indicate they would like to speak. You can also send the chat to Melissa if you would prefer to be recognized that way. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. Please click the raise hand button illustrated on the screen. You will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. Members of the public may also ask questions to staff at any time during the meeting by typing them into the questions chat box illustrated on the lower right of the screen. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please call telephone number eight one three, two seven three, three seven, seven four, extension three five nine. Telephone number eight one three, two seven three, three seven, seven four, extension three five nine. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Joseph?
Here.
Bernstein?
Here.
Cardenas?
Present.
Dix?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Green?
Present.
Press? Marina?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Dickerson?
This is Matt Pleasant, standing in for Amber tonight.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Thank you. All right. Onto our first item of the night, Plant City CPA twenty dash zero five Future Land Use Map Amendment, presented by Mr. Mark Hudson.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Right. The Planning Commission has been processing two plan amendments this cycle for the city of Plant City. I'll be presenting the first and Krista Kelly will be presenting the second. The first one is PCCPA twenty dash oh five. This shows its loc- the location of the plan amendment on Plant City's vision map. As you can see, it's up in the northeastern portion of the community, east of North Park Road, north of Interstate four, west of North Water Road, and southeast Sam Allen Road. As you can see by its location, there is a, a, a red triangle that is quite near the prop- that, that area that is a recognized commercial activity center for the community that we see developing over the next several years. This is a little bit closer aerial of the site. As you can see, it is just south of East Sam Allen Road and just east of North Park Road. The area that is being affected is surrounded by the lavender dashed line. So by way of a little bit of background, this is privately initiated. It is over ten acres, so there will be requirement for a transmittal hearing for it to be reviewed by the Department of Economic Opportunity before ultimately coming back to the Plant City Commission for their action. It comes in at just a little over twenty acres. This is also being done in conjunction with a voluntary annexation process by the landowners. So currently, the land use is Hillsborough County Residential One, and the applicant has required, requested Plant City Commercial. This shows you the future land use map as it stands today. You can see to the west, the red area that is recognizing the commercial corridor that has been identified for North Park Road between the interstate and Sam Allen Road. The light green is the residential one of unincorporated Hillsborough County. And I would also note that you can also see the darker yellow, which represents Plant City Residential Six, which represents, if you went a little bit further north, several hundred acres that has been designated for a single-family detached neighborhood called North Park Isles. And if this was ultimately approved by the city commission, it would deepen that area that is within that corridor, bringing this other land into that commercial designation. I will say that the applicants, and they do have a presentation this evening, goal is to combine this land with those lands directly to the west that have direct access to North Park Road for its future development. And by such, they will be required to do a plan development district to analyze its transportation impacts and like. This is a nice aerial of the site, showing you that today, most of this area is either vacant or in agricultural uses or in rural residential development. Now, I didn't, this was been announced since I gave the briefing to you and I'm, the applicant will give much more detail to you in a, in a few moments. But the intended use of this site and also the site that's directly to the west that already has that commercial designation is to redevelop that into a new location for the South Ford Baptist Hospital. And this is an artist's rendering of that facility. I did go out there and take a few photos to give you an idea what the area looks like today. And this is looking northeast at the intersection of North Park and Sam Allen Roads. And this is actually looking south, actually, on the affected lands that are part of this voluntary annexation and this land use amendment. And this is looking east at some homes on the north side of Sam Allen Road. And though it doesn't directly butt these, these, these are some- And though it doesn't directly, but these are some homes along North Water Road, looking south. So what are the potential impacts? The gained residential entitlements would not be particularly significant going from 20 to 64. However, there is a significant increase, as you may imagine, going from residential one in the county to commercial, increasing that entitlements by about tenfold, up to about 306,000 square feet of commercial slash office uses, which would be allowed and within Plant City's planned hospital and medical facilities are recognized in those land uses. Our staff did look at the Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan. And of course, as I mentioned in the last presentation, the complete goals, objectives, and policies are within your packet. But in particular, we felt it was consistent with neighborhood conservation, community development, enhanced hometown charm, future growth annexations, because this is a pending voluntary annexation, commercial development, growth management, provision of public facilities and economic growth. We also felt, based on our analysis, as though it didn't quite match the Northeast Mass Plan, it matched the overall intent and also the vision of the community, particularly in developing this commercial corridor between the interchange at Park and I-4 and Sam Allen Road. We did talk to the Utilities Department, and they do indicate that they have water and wastewater capacity to serve this. As you might imagine, this will have a fairly large impact on the transportation in the area. And by being located within Plant City's Northeast Master Plan, a plan development is required, and as part of that, they will be doing in-depth transportation analysis as part of that process, if any improvements are necessary, and those improvements would be coordinated with Hillsborough County. As it's not proposing any residential development, we, the school capacity issue is not applicable. And to give you a little bit of idea of the timeline, we're here to get your recommendation today. On September 23rd, we'll be presenting this to the Plant City Planning Board for garner their thoughts. The transmittal public hearing has been tentatively projected for October 26, and the expected final action by the commission is in January of 2021. And with that, our staff recommends to the Planning Commission to find this plant amendment, PCCPA 20 dash 05, to be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan and afford this recommendation to the Plant City Commission. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. As I noted before, the applicant also has a presentation, but I stand for any questions.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Batzel, one of you?
Yes, thank you. We're with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. We're pleased to be here tonight on behalf of South Florida Baptist Hospital Systems, Bay Care Health for this privately initiated plant amendment. I'm joined tonight by Karen Kerr, who's the president of South Florida Baptist Hospital, and Scott Harding, who's the vice president of Facilities Design and Construction. I do have a short presentation, and we'll try not to be duplicative of information that Mark's already provided to you. I'll go ahead and show my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So as Mark mentioned, this property is 20 acres located at the southern edge of Sam Allen Road, 700 feet east of Park Road, generally in the intersection, the I-4 Park Road interchange. The request before you is to establish a future land use classification of commercial. We also have an annexation application into the city of Plant City, and as Mark mentioned, we are processing a concurrent plan development rezoning application. The current future land use, again, Res 1 in Hillsborough County, and you can see that it's contiguous here to existing commercial. Our proposal is to add this new area, which is about 20 acres, to that commercial corridor. This is probably a little bit better view of what the full, full new hospital property will be. It's a little bit difficult on the other maps to see, but we are going to be a total of over 50 acres for this proposed development, and you can see the area here crosshatched in green and red is the total of the 50 acres, and you can see how that lays out with respect to the existing commercial corridor. The property that is the subject of the map amendment is actually limited to these three folios here on the eastern side of the property. And now for the good stuff. This project will be a new medical facility. It will include a hospital, an emergency room, and medical office. There will be out parcels as well. You can see from the layout that the hospital here in the center, plenty of room for out parcels and plenty of room for enhanced buffering from the surrounding uses. Mark stole a little bit of our thunder by showing our rendering. I'm just kidding, Mark. But you can see another view here of the fully built hospital. Of course, this is a conceptual plan, but what's important about this rendering is it shows you the massing and the scale of the facility against that 50-acre property. With respect to the comp plan justification, it's nearby the interchange between I-4 and Park Road. It's considered a commercial activity center. This designation is assigned to only two of five interchanges in Plant City. The Park Road Commercial Activity Center affords the greatest potential for meeting the future general and highway commercial needs of northeastern Hillsborough County. As Mark mentioned, we'll have to go through significant transportation analysis with respect to this proposed development during the PD application process. The northeastern quadrant vision map considers the existing overall project area as commercial and the subject area as Res 6. The project has access to Sam Allen Road, which is planned for a four-lane expansion. It has access to Park Road and is less than one-third a mile from the I-4 interchange, all making it a perfect area for a modest expansion of the commercial area. The request would be to expand the envisioned commercial area 700 feet into that moderately dense planning area. We believe, and Planning Commission believes, this is a reasonable expansion compatible with the comprehensive plan. As staff has found it consistent, we would ask for your recommendation of approval tonight. We are available to answer any questions that you have. Our development team is available as well as Karen or Scott, so please let us know if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I will open it up at this point in time to comments from the public. I don't see any hands raised on my side.
One at least raised from Michael Williamson and a second queue after that.
All right. I will recognize Mr. Williamson. You have three minutes to provide us with some comments. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. This is Michael Williamson. I live at 2608 East Sam Allen Road. I am across the street from the proposed property on Sam Allen Road to the north. And I appreciate the eagerness of those who made the presentation, but as a resident, I am not as eager to walk out my front door and see a six-story hospital across the street from my home or to, you know, have the traffic, the noise, the lights that go along with that. We've lived here for about 30 years, and this has been primarily a quiet agricultural corner of the neighborhood. And it looks like that's going to change pretty dramatically. And this proposed amendment brings that commercial corridor right down in front of our homes, whereas before it would have cut off, you know, prior to coming downward, these single, where our rural residences are at. So it's a lot of change going on in our corner of the world that we're not real thrilled about. I really don't know what my options are as a resident. I feel like it damages me as a property holder from a residential standpoint, because I don't feel like there are many people who are going to want to live across the street from this type of a commercial property. And we are not currently zoned for commercial. Our properties are zoned for residential, and I don't know whether there are any plans to change that in the 2040 vision or change that in the shorter term, so that maybe these properties do become attracted to someone else who wants to develop if this wants to continue to be a development opportunity for the city and the county. But as a resident, it's certainly not something that we're looking forward to.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. All right. I see Chandler Fatticombe.
I second what the gentleman was just saying. I'm too concerned about living directly behind a hospital and the traffic that comes with it. My wife and I purchased this property specifically because of the seclusion, but, you know, access to Tampa and Orlando fairly easily without the hassle of Tampa and Orlando. So, you know, changing the zoning of our current land, I mean, that's something that needs to be considered here, because, you know, I wouldn't mind selling, but nobody's going to want to buy a residential property behind a hospital. Thank you.
And thank you, sir. Could you state your name one time for the clerk, just for the record, please?
My name is Aaron Fatticombe.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, I don't see any more hands raised. Is that? Okay, double check. All right. Open it up to the commissioners for comments or questions.
Rebuttal from the applicant.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Rebuttal from the applicant. Three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Williams and Mr. Fatticombe. We look forward to talking to you through this entire process. I mean, obviously, change is difficult, and we want to make sure that we have a good dialogue and that we provide copies of plans. So we'll be reaching out to you directly after this meeting. If you provide your information to the Planning Commission, that would be helpful to us in starting a dialogue with you, and we'd love to start the conversation with you.
Thank you, Ms. Batzel.
Absolutely.
All right. Over to my planning commissioners. Do you have any comments or questions of the applicant or staff? This one, any discussion? Not seeing anybody. Oh, Commissioner Dix? Can't hear you.
Now, how about that, Mr. Chairman?
There you go.
I apologize. Anyway, I appreciate this. I'm very sensitive, of course, to the folks who are living on Sam Allen and to the comments that they have made. However, it's very, very worth noting that this whole area, as the commission has seen, because the commission has worked on projects that are going into the area, this whole area is going to be changing dramatically over the next five to 10 years. And frankly, I can think of nothing better for the community and really for the entire region than what is being proposed for this regional hospital to provide services, not only for the northern part of the community, but really to Lakeland and even to East Tampa, because it's where it is situated, right there on I-4. So I respect the fact that the applicant's attorney has said that they would be reaching out to all the residents and working with them to solve any issues or concerns that they may have. I think that's the proper procedure, and I certainly think this is consistent with all that our plans have going forward, so I would move that we find a, have a finding of consistency to this map amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Dix. I will hold that motion and see if there is anyone else, any other commissioners, Commissioner Doughty?
Well, I just, I would second his motion.
Oh, all right. Look, you guys are hurrying me along then, so I guess we're just all right, closed public comment, and we have a motion for consistency from Commissioner Dix, a second to that motion for consistency from Commissioner Doughty. Is there any more discussion from the commissioners? Questions or comments going once? No? All right, then I will ask the clerk to please take a roll call vote on this item.
Joseph?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Kret?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Onto our next item, item number three, PCCPA 20 dash 06. It's another future land use map amendment, and it will be presented by Krista Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. I'm presenting Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2006. This is a privately initiated map amendment. I'm sorry?
Air your screen, please.
Oh, you can't see the screen?
No.
Hmm.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. Now, everybody can see it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about that. Okay. This site is located north of Sparkman Road on the west side of Jap Tucker Road, and again, south of Jim Johnson Road. CSX Railroad Track bounds the property on the western side. It's on the southern part of Plant City. This aerial shows the site. Currently, it's under agricultural use. The surrounding area is characterized by rural residential development.
Krista, your slides are not advancing on the screen we're seeing.
Hmm. I'm sorry. It's advancing for me, but let's see.
Oh, there it is.
There it is.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, now we see the aerial. Thank you.
Sure. I'm sorry about that. Okay. The site consists of three parcels totaling a little over 28 acres. Currently, it's in Hillsborough County, designated Residential 1, and the applicant is requesting Residential 4 with the Plant City land use category. They are seeking an annexation. You can see the adopted future land use map where the site and surrounding area in the county is Residential 1. To the west, there is a park directly to the west and then to the northwest industrial area, which is like a distribution center with warehousing and trucking. Again, the applicant's requesting Residential 4. This is a site photos looking west from Jap Tucker Road, and you can see the row crops. I'm looking northeast. There's rural residential across the street. The area is an established rural community. The impacts of this change would essentially increase the number of dwelling units from 28 dwelling units to 115 dwelling units. That would be the primary impact to this change. In addition, it would be annexed into Plant City in a separate action. Staff reviewed it for consistency, and these policies are listed in your packet. Considerations were neighborhood conservation, annexation, growth management, and the provision of public facilities. We received comments back from a number of agencies. This school district noted that school capacity would be addressed at a later date and that any transportation improvements would be coordinated with the county at a later date as well. The city doesn't foresee any issue with the provision of water and wastewater services. Based on these findings, Planning Commission staff recommends that CPA 2006 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine 2040 Plant City Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to the Plant City Commission. This is the timeline. It will go to the Planning Board on September 23rd and the City Commission on October 26. city commission on October 26th. The projected adoption is January of 2021. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this, and that concludes my presentation.
And you're in, Commissioner? Chairman? There. Thank you, Krista. There is there a presentation by the applicant on this one? No? Or I will open it up to comments from the public now. I see one hand raised for a Mr. Wallace, Brian Wallace. Please go ahead. Identify yourself. Don't forget to identify yourself. You have three minutes. Comments? Hello? Go ahead, Mr. Wallace. You also have a Mark Davis that has raised his hand. All right. We'll go to Mr. Davis and maybe circle back around. Mark Davis, please go ahead. Don't forget to identify yourself, and you have three minutes. Mark Davis, are you there?
May need to unmute your phone.
He is unmuted, and he's ready to speak. I don't know why he's.
They wrote in the questions that they can't unmute. That it says they're unmuted.
Yeah, it shows them as unmuted. Both Brian Wallace, Davis should, should be audible.
This is Brian Wallace. Can you hear me?
There, yes, sir. All right. We'll start with you. Please identify yourself, and you have three minutes, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you very much. This is Brian Wallace. I live directly across the street from this, and I'm worried about the, the 200 or 300 cars you're going to dump onto Jap Tucker Road, since the Jap Tucker Road is the only access to I-4 from everything south of where I live. Our traffic is already immense, and now you want to change our residential from one house per one acre, which is what everybody around here has, to how many houses? Four houses per one acre? And I object. I'm sorry, we have enough traffic as it is, and then you're going to annex it into Plant City. I don't want to be annexed into Plant City, and I'm sitting straight across the street. So how long am I going to stay here before I get annexed? I don't really like it. One house, one acre. It's what everybody else has. What's wrong with this? That's my biggest commission, my biggest problem. I mean, if you go two streets down to where Jap Tucker becomes Clemens, they got speed bumps. We don't. This is a racetrack out here. Everybody going to I-4 from Smith Riles Road and back to County Line Road comes down Jap Tucker Road. It's the only way to I-4, and now you want to dump how many more cars on us? We already have kids riding down the roads on four-wheelers, running, running crazy down this road, and I don't want 200 or 300 more cars running in front of my house. And I don't understand why we can't just do one house per one acre. I don't really want four houses per acre. It's too much traffic. That's my biggest complaint, and since I'm straight across the street from this, I'm going to see it. It is the only way to I-4. The only way to I-4. There is no other way to I-4. From everything behind me, it all comes down Jap Tucker Road. That's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. All right. Did we ever figure out what's going on with Mark Davis? Mark Davis is unmuted. He can speak. All right. Please identify yourself, and you have three minutes. Mark Davis?
He, he put a couple of comments in the, in the question area. He said that they're opposed to the rezoning as a resident of Jap Tucker Road. He was agreeing with Mr. Wallace's comments, and is also concerned about wastewater runoff and the road issues that were mentioned by Mr. Wallace, and also had a question about whether or not they would be on city water. So I know that doesn't, and then he just wrote in that he apologizes. He's not sure why we can't hear him.
Yeah, we apologize also on this end, Mr. Davis. But thank you for the, the comments and your input. Duly noted that you are objecting to this, obviously, along with Mr. Wallace. Are there any more hands? No. All right. Yes?
If, if I could, I, I meant to mention that today we did receive a comment with a number of addresses or, you know, surrounding property owners without names, just listing properties in objection to this proposal. They submitted it, and it should be delivered to you here shortly. It was delivered, obviously, today, so we couldn't get it right to you, but I did want to mention that you do have it.
Okay.
Their concerns were transportation and the change in density.
Yeah, I sent it about 2:33 this afternoon to the commissioners.
All right.
Thank you.
And seeing no more hands, I will give it back to you, Ms. Kelly, for a rebuttal?
The applicant.
Oh, sorry, the applicant. Would the applicant like to make a rebuttal? No. All right, then I will, I will go to commissioners. Are there any comments, questions, or discussions on this item for the, for staff or the applicant from commissioners? Give them a second here. I'm not seeing anyone popping up, so I will go on ahead and close the public comment portion, and I will open the floor up for motions from the commissioners Mr. Chair? I see a box, but I don't see who it is there. Commissioner Bernstein, go ahead.
Yeah, I would move for a vote in favor of finding Plant City Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 20-06 consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the Plant City Comprehensive Plan, and pass it along to the planning board and ultimately the city commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernstein. We have a motion of consistency by Commissioner Bernstein. Is there a second out there somewhere?
Commissioner Crass, second.
Oh, we got a second by Commissioner Crass. We have a motion for consistency finding by Commissioner Bernstein, a second by Commissioner Crass, and with that, I will ask if there's any more discussions or questions from the commissioners. Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on this item. Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Cardina?
Yes.
Dix?
Yes.
Doughty?
Yes.
Green? Pratt?
Yes.
Marina?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Kelly, and with that, it looks like we are done with this meeting, so I'd like to thank everybody for their time. Thank all my commissioners, and this meeting is adjourned.